It is seven thirty-three P M on Tuesday, August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five. Good evening. My name is Christian Klein. I'm the Chair of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals, and I'm calling this meeting of the board to order. I would first like to confirm all members and anticipated officials are present. Members of the zoning board of appeals, we have Roger Dupont.
Here.
We have Patrick Hanlon.
Here.
We have, has Venk and Holly joined us yet? Not yet. Okay, we have Adam LeBlanc.
Here.
And we have Brad Bernowski.
Here.
You are with us. Joining us from the town, we have Colleen Ralston, our clerk and zoning assistant.
Here.
Have you with us for docket three eight five nine sixty-nine Falmouth Road, Matthew and Laura Tinkoff.
Hello.
Yes, Matthew Tinkoff's here in council, Marywin Stanley O'Connor.
Good evening. For docket three eight six three one forty-four Webster Street, we have Joshua Michlock.
Here.
They have you with us. And then for docket three eight six four thirty-seven Melrose Street, I believe Mr. Costas with us this evening. Yeah, it's Mrs. Costa here. Okay. So tonight's meeting of the Arlington zoning board of appeals is being conducted remotely consistent with the bill signed by Governor Healy on March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, which extended temporary provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven. The extension of these provisions allows public bodies to hold their meetings remotely by providing live adequate alternative means of public access to the deliberations. This meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast by A C M I. Members of the public who are participating via Zoom and who wish to offer public comment should be aware that they will be asked to provide their full name and address so that a complete public record of the meeting can be taken in accordance with state law. All participants at this meeting are advised that people may be listening to the meeting without offering public comment, and those people may are not required to identify themselves. Any votes that are taken this evening will be conducted by roll call. All supporting materials that have been provided members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda, and as Chair, I reserve the right to take items out of order in the interest of promoting an orderly meeting. As the board will be taking up a new business at this meeting, as Chair, I make the following land acknowledgement. Whereas the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington, Massachusetts discusses and arbitrates the use of land in Arlington, formerly known as monotomy, an Algonquin word meaning swift waters. The board hereby acknowledges the town of Arlington is located on the ancestral lands of the Massachusetts tribe, the tribe of indigenous peoples from whom the colony, province, and Commonwealth have taken their names. We pay our respects the ancestral bloodline of the Massachusetts tribe and their descendants who still inhabit historic Massachusetts territories today. Looking, it does not appear that Mr. Holly has been able to join us yet, so I'm going to go ahead and move past the administrative items and move on to the next section. So before opening tonight's meeting for public hearings, here are some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of tonight's business. After I announce each agenda item, I will ask the applicants to introduce themselves for themselves and make their presentation to the board. I will then request that members of the board ask what questions they have on the proposal. After the board's questions have been answered, I will open the meeting for public comment. At the conclusion of public comment, the board will deliberate and vote to either continue or close the public hearing. All votes will be conducted by roll call vote. The final vote on any matter before the board will be taken at a subsequent meeting once the written decision has been drafted and provided to the board. The decision will then be filed with the town clerk, starting the twenty-day appeal period under state law. After that time, the applicant may proceed with their building permit. However, under state law, no decision granted by this board shall take effect until a certified copy of the final decision has been filed with and recorded at the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds in Cambridge by the applicant. So with that, I'm going to move ahead to docket three eight six four thirty-seven Melrose Street. So we had had some communication with the contractor earlier today because we're still having some information, unfortunately, understanding exactly what the proposal is. So at this time, I think it would be helpful if we could hear, just have a brief discussion with the homeowners, just to sort of let them know what exactly it is we're looking for, what our concerns are. We can then proceed. Hopefully, once we we know all the information that we're looking for. So with that, I would invite the the Costas to unmute themselves and just briefly introduce themselves to the board.
Hi, I'm Robin Costa and.
Manoel Acosta.
Nice to have you both with us. So our understanding, you're looking to do an addition on the rear of your house. It appears that it will include an elevator as a part of of that.
That's something in the future. Yes, yes, we try to.
The main thing is we're enclosing porches in the back, really basically just enclosing the porch in the back.
So we've been trying to, so the way that he's been.
We actually knocking down the porch because you tried to make it larger than it is. And 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 ever, I think we have eighteen feet from the back from the fence to the to the newer addition, right? It's to be twenty feet, but I guess we'll speak to Ms. Colleen, and she says we can go eighteen feet. Correct.
That that may be true. Unfortunately, the the issue, part of the issue we're having is that we don't have clear drawings that indicate exactly what it is is being proposed. We have a site plan that seems to imply it's the same size, I believe, as was originally drawn. We have one set of drawings that shows no doors on it at all. We have a hand sketch that shows what looks like a door and maybe some stairs.
Correct, yes.
So we, in order for the board to fully understand what it is you're you're requesting from the board, we really need a set of drawings that sort of brings all that information together in a way that we totally understand exactly what it is. We just don't want to be in a position where we approve what we think we see, and you think it's something else, and your contractor thinks it's something else again. And so I had relayed to Colleen earlier today, and she had contacted the contractor that we're looking for just some just consistent information so that we know exactly what it is we're looking for. I apologize that this is, you know, sort of holding back the the start of your project. But for the board, we really just need to make sure that we fully understand what it is is being asked of us.
So what the picture you have now is what?
So we have a set of drawings that looks like they were, you know, drafted by CAD that show the a typical floor plan. They show a front elevate, was labeled a front elevation, which is the rear of the house with the with the addition raised up off the ground, and then two side elevations that show the same. Then we have a hand sketch that shows the rear going all the way to the ground with a door at ground level on one side and that what appears to be a door, maybe on top of steps on the left-hand side.
Or if this, the the exit for the first and second floor that we have.
Yeah, so.
We exit.
Yeah, so we're, we just need things to be consistent is really the problem that we're having. And so if what we would really like is if the either the contractor can draw it back up again, or if he has someone who he's working with, who can give us one set of drawings that shows the full extent of what it is you're looking to do. And then we have something that not only that we can review, but that we can also base a decision on and say, you know, these are the drawings we have. This is what we are agreeing you are allowed to proceed with so that there isn't confusion going forward.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Well, that's.
You know what? That's what we've been asking him for since we all started this, and he just doesn't seem to.
It's just not, my God.
Yeah, it's been a journey, needless to say.
I'm so sorry about that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Hanlon.
I wanted to, just in light of the comments that were being made by Ms. Costa at the beginning, I think it was, I may have gotten my Costas mixed up. If I did, I'm sorry. About the 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 rear backyard. There was some question as to whether it should be eighteen feet or twenty feet. And under the zoning bylaw, the drawings you submitted indicate that your lot, your total lot is ninety feet. And the rule under the bylaw is that the rear yard setback has to be either twenty feet. But if your total yard is less than a hundred feet, it's twenty percent of wherever you got. So that's where the eighteen feet comes from, because if you have, if your whole yard is is ninety feet, twenty percent of that is eighteen feet. And that gives you an idea. I mean, I'm not really in a position now to tell you all of the implications that may have. But that's, but what you're protected, your rear yard is, if that ninety feet figure is right, it's eighteen feet. And the question then is whether you're actually getting into that backyard or not. So that's the first thing. The second thing that your contractor may need some help dealing with is there's an inch, there's a question here about usable open space. And you're required to have, remind me, Mr. Chairman, I think it's thirty-five percent of the gross floor area as usable open space. And right now, you're you're you are, your surveyor has indicated there's no usable open space and that there still will be no usable open space, so it doesn't change. You should look at that a little bit more carefully because the reason you have no usable open spaces is because you really don't have any usable open spaces, but because there's a minimum requirement that the minimum dimension has to be at least twenty-five feet. And there's a question that you need somebody to advise you on about whether or not the area under the deck counts. If it does, you have some usable open space now. I think you will find when you do the arithmetic that it still doesn't correspond, it still doesn't conform with the thirty-five percent you're supposed to have. And what that means is under the zoning bylaw, you can, we can give you a special permit to allow that as long as we find that what you're doing is no more detrimental than the current nonconformity, which is either whatever I think is is some positive number, but still not conforming, or zero, which is obviously nonconforming. And I mean, these are abstruse kinds of concepts, and I don't expect you to be able to get it from what I can just tell you right now. But your contractor should know what this will do, and if he tells you he doesn't really, if he if he looks at this tape and says, I have no idea what Mr. Hanlon was talking about, then he just needs to get the help of somebody who's really familiar with our own zoning law bylaw and not just zoning bylaws generally. Because in these areas, Arlington is, if not unique, it's just unusual. And before you can kind of figure out how this all works to come to us, you kind of have to figure out what the issue is. I think that your issue is that you don't have, is that you need your, you need to get what I've just described as a non-detrimental, no detrimental impact finding under section eight point one point three B of our zoning bylaw, which in a few days you'll be able to get what I just said in from A C M I so that you can remember it. I don't expect you to remember it now. But it just requires a certain amount of working through detailed stuff that I that is esoteric. And I guarantee you that it's esoteric for most of the members of the board, most of the time. But that's what your problem is, is just is to figure out exactly where it is you need relief from and what the argument is, how you approach that. But separately from all of that, you've got to tell us enough about what you're planning to do so that we can figure out that it makes sense. And that's what the Chair Chairman was talking about. It may not actually turn out to have much to do with the legal thing that we have to address. But we can't just deal with something that you have country. And you don't want us to do that either, because once you had a special permit, you go to the building inspector and he'd say, what the hell is this about? And then you're back before us to get it all cleared up. So, you know, it will be, it will be worth your time just to get everything in order. And I don't foresee that this would be a huge problem, although I I'm not guaranteeing you anything. But to some extent, it's just a matter of getting everything that T's crossed and the I's dotted, and and then we can go forward with you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Yes, thank you. And I guess, so you said he can see this recording and hear all this information?
It'll be on A C M I within a day or two, so you'll be able to catch all of it.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
So then with that, I will move to the board of appeals for the town of Arlington, continue the public hearing for docket three eight six four thirty-seven Melrose Street to Tuesday, September ninth.
Second.
At seven thirty P M, seconded by Mr. Hanlon. So then a roll call vote of the board to continue. Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Your Hanlon?
Here, yes.
Yes. Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Your Bernowski?
Yes.
The Chair of Votes, yes, we are continued on thirty-seven Melrose Street. Thank you so much for coming tonight. We look forward to seeing.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay.
With that, I will go back on our agenda. So docket, agenda item number five was docket three eight five nine sixty-nine Falmouth Road. So this is listed as a continuation from last time. I know that the, I believe the applicant's contract was unavailable, and so we had continued without testimony last time. But at this time, I will ask the applicant's attorney to introduce themselves and tell us what they are proposing to do.
Good evening, Chairman Klein, members of the board, Marywin Stanley O'Connor, for the homeowners, Matthew and Laura Tinkoff. Mr. Tinkoff is on the Zoom as well as the designer, Chris Labihan of Robin Gannon Interior Designs. And he can answer any questions. Mr. Kneely, I do not believe is on. He had some family matters tonight. This is a request for a special permit under eight point eleven, eight point one point three and chapter forty-eight, section six of Massachusetts general laws for an extension or addition to a prior nonconforming one-family home. We have provided you with the plans. What is intended here is a very, I would suggest you, a very de minimis extension into the left side yard, which is nonconforming, to provide an increase in additional space so that the kitchen, that the entire Tinkoff family can sit down and eat together in the kitchen and on the second floor is to give some additional space to the son's bedroom. And I can go through the criteria if you want for issuance of the special permit. You have to make, the board has to make a finding that the proposed extension will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and is not substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconformity. So if you'd like to go through the plans first and questions, or if you'd like me to go through the criteria, it's entirely up to you.
Let me go ahead. I can share the plot plan, which I think would probably be helpful at this stage.
And I just add, I would suggest that the statute and the bylaw, the bylaw, which of course tracks the statute, are intended just for situations just like this.
Okay, so this, it's the site plan, so the we're dealing primarily with solely with this area here between the left side of the house and the lot line. So the, my understanding is the existing is essentially a landing and a set of stairs, and the proposal is a twelve point seven foot by five point nine foot addition on the side of the house. And is the three point eight that's listed on the site plan, is that the existing or is that the proposed setback?
Oh, well, the proposed, it would be three point eight, I believe. The existing left side depth is five point nine.
Okay.
Exclusive of the stairs. The stairs go into the setback.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay. But the so the existing side, left side setback is listed as five point nine, and the proposed on the application is listed as two point one.
Correct. That's according to Mr. Kneely.
Okay, so two, so is it two point one feet? So where it says three point eight on this plan, it looks like that may be from the existing steps.
That's correct.
Okay, so the two point one is what is being proposed. Got it. Okay. And then hopefully now you see the plan of the house. So this is that that existing porch off the kitchen. This is on the upper floor. So this is again the existing plan. So this is the that existing covered porch on the side of the house. And then this is what is being proposed. So the addition to the side has windows on three sides. As in the extension of the kitchen. And then on the upper floor, the bedroom will extend out in that same footprint.
Correct.
And then the view from the street is just being detailed, essentially the same as the opposite side of the house. So it's a currently a gambrel style of roof and down in the lower right is where you see the elevation, proposed elevation of that side of the house. And the kitchen. So these just show the areas more furnished, the initial plans. So I'm going to go ahead and stop the share of that. And so as as O'Connor had said, the the reason this is before the board, this is an existing nonconforming. The house is existing nonconforming with regards to the side yard setback. And that an applicant is, may seek a special permit from the Board of Appeals in order to increase the nonconformity so long as the board is able to find that it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the condition as it as it currently exists. What is this? So it's kind of, do you want to go through the criteria?
Certainly. I would suggest it's essential, undesirable to the public convenience of welfare. It's an improvement to an existing single-family home that's comparable to other homes in the area for a growing family. There is absolutely no increase in traffic or any concerns about safety and safety. There's no increase in parking. It will not overload any municipal system. There are no special regulations that apply. And I would suggest you, it will not impair the integrity or character of the district, nor be detrimental to the neighborhood. It's it's a substantially similar home to many homes in the neighborhood, and it will certainly not cause an excess use of this type in the neighborhood. And I would suggest you, it's fairly small in the scheme of things. I think it satisfies all the criteria.
Thank you. Do you know how far the house on the adjacent lot is, the Trafford's house?
I would ask Mr. Tinkoff if he knows.
Do you mean how far the right side of that house is to the property line?
Yeah, just sort of approximately.
I would say maybe I don't know, six feet, maybe, seven feet.
Okay. And did you have an opportunity to discuss these plans with a budding neighbor?
We did.
Are they on the call by any chance?
They are not.
They're not.
They, they did not intend to object, as far as my clients know.
That's right.
Good. Are there questions from the board? Mr. LeBlanc?
I just had a one question, what the intent for the foundation is of the new structure, just because it does look like it is fairly close to a somewhat substantial retaining wall that's right on the property line.
I would ask maybe the designer would know, Mr. Labihan?
The intent for the foundation was to match the existing foundation, if we could, with a contingency to modify a foundation if necessary. There would be some exploration required once a permit was issued to see if we were able to go forward with our initial plan, but are absolutely open to whatever needs to happen from a structural standpoint and a security standpoint with regards to the wall and the existing home.
So it'd be like a poured concrete foundation?
Correct.
Okay.
And would, is it just going to be a crawl space underneath the first floor?
Correct.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing none. I'll now open up the meeting for public comment. All the questions and comments are taken as they relate to the matter at hand and should be directed to the board for the purpose of informing its decision. Members of the public will be granted time to ask questions and make comments. Members of the public who wish to speak can digitally raise their hand using the button on the React tab in the Zoom application. Those calling in by phone may dial star nine to indicate you'd like to speak. You'll be called upon by the Chair, asked to give your full name and address to the record and given time for your questions and comments. All questions are to be addressed through the Chair. Please remember to speak clearly. And once all public questions and comments have been addressed, the public comment period will be closed. So with that, are there any members of the public who wish to address this application? Again, this is docket three eight five nine sixty-nine Falmouth. Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public comment period. So what the board has before it, this is a application that's submitted under section eight one three eight one one, eight one three B of the zoning bylaw, which also implies section six of chapter forty-eight and in which the the board is authorized to allow the expansion of an existing nonconformity with a finding that it is not substantially more detrimental than the existing condition. When the board makes this kind of a determination, we usually rely on the criteria under section three, three, three in the zoning bylaw, which provides the required findings in order for the granting of a special permit. And those were reviewed briefly by Ms. O'Connor earlier. And I would ask if there were any questions from the board in regards to the findings that she had proposed.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
I just wanted to say that a few weeks ago, I I went out to visit the site and Mr. Takanov graciously gave me leave to walk onto the property and and look at it a little bit more carefully. I just wanted the board to realize that between the property here and the property over to the left is a retaining wall that is relatively shallow or not very high and towards the front, and it gets higher towards the back because of the slope. And over the, which creates, which actually creates a visible sense of distance between this property and the property next door because they're on different levels. And secondly, the that area is, at least at this time of the year, it's very difficult to see from one to the other because of a thick hedge that exists between the two. And I came away with the sense that the only potential, the only potential issue that that we could have with this application would not have to do with the impact on the neighborhood generally, which I I think would be essentially nil. But whether or not that particular space right between the enlarged area and the area of the property next door would be an uncomfortable fit for the way the two properties work together. And it seemed to me by looking at it that it did not seem to be an uncomfortable fit, that it and obviously the amount of distance between the proposal and the side yard. uh, and obviously, the amount of distance between the proposal and the side yard is is relatively small. Um, but this is about as little obtrusive as you can imagine it being under these circumstances. And I was waiting today to see whether there was be any actual whether the neighbor would have anything to say about this. And the absence of an objection to me is fairly significant in supporting my initial compare- my initial impression that uh, this is something that should go forward in more or less the way that uh Ms. O'Connor said, that this is the sort of extension that uh, that the bylaw and the state statute is is intended to allow. And under certain circumstances, and I think that the circumstances that make it possible uh exist here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Are there any other comments in regards to the proposed findings from the board? Should the board vote to um to close and approve the application, there are three standard conditions that the board applies uh to its um, decisions. The first is that the plans and specifications approved by the board for the special permit shall be the final plans and specifications submitted to the building inspector of the town of Arlington. In connection with this application for zoning relief, there should be no deviation during construction from approved plans and specifications without the express written approval of the Arlington zoning board of appeals. The second is that the building inspector is hereby notified that they are to monitor the site and should proceed with appropriate enforcement procedures. At any time they determine that violations are present, the building inspector shall proceed under section three point one of the zoning bylaw and under the provisions of chapter forty, section twenty one D of the Massachusetts general laws and institute noncriminal complaints. If necessary, the building inspector may also approve and institute appropriate criminal action, also in accordance with section three point one. And the third is that the board shall maintain continuing jurisdiction with regard to the special permit grant. Are there any additional conditions which members of the board feel would be appropriate um, and necessary in order to support the the findings of the applications? Seeing none, um. Would there any further comments from the board? I would ask Mr. Hanlon if he would uh assist with um the drafting of a decision in favor of the application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to do so.
Thank you very much. Uh, so with that, I will move that the Board of Appeals for the Town of Arlington close the public hearing for docket three eight five nine sixty nine Falmouth Road. One second.
Second.
Mr. Hanlon. So the board will uh, this is a vote to close the public hearing. Uh, there will be a decision drafted, and then at our September ninth hearing, we will vote uh, on the the final written decision on this matter. So with that, the vote to close, uh, roll call vote of the board, Mr. Dupont.
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Jabranowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes, yes, we are closed on uh docket three eight five nine sixty nine Falmouth Road. Thank you so much for coming before us this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're quite welcome.
Bye.
With that, where to hide my agenda? Uh, this brings us to item seven on our agenda this evening, which is docket three eight six three one forty four Webster Street, unit one. Um, this is a continuation from last week. Um, I was unable to attend last week. I have reviewed the application, uh, sorry, excuse me, the recording um and submitted uh, form uh to uh Ms. Ralston under the the Mullen rule and that uh form, I believe, was posted. To the website, so I am eligible for for voting on this matter. With that, um, I would ask the applicant to introduce themselves and um describe to us the changes they have made uh since they were here last.
Uh, yeah, hello, everybody. Good afternoon, good evening. Um, nice to see everybody again. Uh, so we had the uh meeting last week. We had some nice uh feedback from everybody here. Uh, we made some changes. Um, did you want me to bring up the plan or do you want to?
You have them readily at hand. That would be great. Otherwise, I can navigate to them.
Uh, I have it.
I do have it this time, Josh. Hi, everybody. Oh, great. Okay.
I have it this time, but I'll.
I will let you drive unless you need me to jump in.
Just wanna make sure everybody can see that, okay? Uh, so uh, the the main feedback was on the front porch here, that the the porch e- extended to the side of the building. Um, and kind of the feedback was uh to keep it kind of in the existing footprint. And that's what we have uh done here. We kind of still left some of the design elements trying to make it seem like a a porch. Um, you know, with some different types of materials and siding, different pieces of trim. Um, but so this is what we came up with in a week, uh-huh, after, you know, half of it being on vacation.
Do you have the side elevation as well?
I do, sure. Uh, this is the side elevation uh coming from the left. So this is uh standing in the driveway. This would be the front of the house. Uh, kind of carrying those same elements around the corner here with the uh the board of bad siding.
Then the opposite side as well, is that?
Yeah.
Are there questions or comments from the board in regards to the the revised plans?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. LeBlanc.
I just wanted to thank the applicant for uh taking into consideration what we discussed at the previous um meeting, and I think the design that we have here um fits much better with uh what I was envisioning for enclosing this porch. And I I do agree with um their general approach to how they're doing this with a different uh material and design elements to make it still seem like a porch that they carried over from their previous uh version. So uh, again, just wanted to thank them for coming back to to the drawing board a little bit here. Appreciate it.
Thank you. It's uh, it's rare that you get a uh question in the form of a compliment sometimes in these meetings, so I just wanted to uh uh, say thank you for that. I appreciate it. We appreciate it.
Are there other questions from the board? I just have one question on the site plan, if you have that available, otherwise I can bring that up.
Sure, uh, we pull that here. I went over this last time, but believe it or not, this is maybe my third Zoom meeting uh ever here, so one sec.
We're gonna have you a pro by the time this is over.
Uh, let's, let's hope not. All right.
Okay, so on the proposed side at the rear of the house.
Yes.
There is a proposed permeable paver patio.
Yes.
Is that at the same elevation as the garage, as the driveway?
Uh, it is gonna be uh roughly the same elevation. I'm not sure if there's gonna be a step down uh to the actual driveway, uh depending on where we're at with, you know, legal steps coming off the back of the house. Uh, but it's, it's totally intended to be a uh patio space for that second, that rear unit. I believe this, the question came up last week about parking um from a neighbor.
Yeah, cuz that that that's my my only concern. Um you know, you're you're compliant with the usable open space requirement because that does not allow parking on that area. And if that area is used for parking, then technically, if the usable open space, it's a it's it's odd that you put a car there and all of a sudden it's a zoning violation. Um, so just wanted to make sure that there was some that it didn't just appear to be an extension of the driveway and that there was an intention and some kind of a separation there, whether it's a change in materials or a change in elevation or something that makes it so that it is not readily usable or doesn't appear as a parking space.
Yeah, it's definitely gonna be a a change in materials from the the asphalt driveway, and it's uh, so the rear of the the property does is a little bit higher than the the where the patio is, so we might have to, you know, have this patio be a slight higher. Our plan for parking would be to have, you know, two cars, uh, one for each unit in the garage, and then they would have tandem parking in the driveway here.
Perfect. Is the proposed to the existing driveway is concrete strips, right, in your replacement of the wall? Okay, got it.
Yep. And we're under the um the impermeable coverage area on that. Uh, that's part of the reason why the patio was per- permeable.
Okay. Other further questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and open this here for public comment. Uh, again, public comment is taken as it relates to the matter at hand, should be directed to the board for the purpose of informing its decision. Members of the public who wish to address the board may uh raise their hand using the uh button on the React tab, and if you're calling in by phone, you can dial star nine. Uh, recognized by the chair and ask for your questions or comments. Are there any questions or comments from the public in regards to this application? Uh, which is number three eight six three one forty four Webster Street. Seeing none, um. Go ahead and close the public comment period. Uh, I will note, I was on the onsite uh last week um and while standing on the opposite side of the street staring at the house was uh going about a conversation with the the homeowner across the street, who was very eager to see this project move forward, uh, was present at the hearing last time. And was just uh, was glad to see that attention was being paid to the house and that it would be uh improved, so. Very glad with the the work we have seen, um. So this falls for us, this is um under section five, three, nine, D, which is involves the enclosure of a porch, uh, which allows the enclosure with the um, excuse me, with a special permit from the board. Uh, there are no special requirements under section five, three, nine, D, so it is just the criteria, the standard criteria that are under um uh, found in section three, three, three of the zoning bylaw. So, um, excuse me. The the general finding is that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts. Uh, and we find that through the um the following. So the first is that the requested use is allowed or allowed by a special permit in the district. Uh, this is allowed by special permit under section five, three, nine, D. Uh, the requested use is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. Um. As noted um by the applicants, um excuse me, uh, updating the envelope at the house to uh for modern times, additional living space to allow uh the new owners to to more fully enjoy their uh their space. Um. It also uh provides a a sheltered and o- opening for the uh for the residents who are coming in through the front door there. Um. And allows them to take part in the the streetscape. Uh, the requested use will not create undue traffic ingestion or impairment to pedestrian safety. This is an existing two-family house that will remain uh actually will be transferred and become a duplex house, but it will still uh house two families, will not increase the amount of um traffic generated by the property. Also, the um the enclosure of the porch should not adversely impact the visibility of the drivers of the property from uh viewing pedestrians on the sidewalk. Um, it does not change what that dimension is or those viewing angles, so that should remain as it is. Um. It shouldn't unload any uh, the requested use will not overload any public system. Um, will not noticeably increase the amount of of usage of any utilities um that would require uh action by the town. Uh, requested use will not impair the character or integrity of the district. Um, as noted by the applicants, they did a very careful job in the the detailing of the of the of the front and of maintaining the the footprint of the prior porch and having detailing that while looking back to the uses of porch also uh fits in very, very well with the remainder of the house. Um, the requested use will not be detrimental to public health or welfare. Um, and the requested use will not cause an excess of use detrimental to the neighborhood. Um, where this remains a residence in a residential district. This is what the district was intended for, and the proposal meets those requirements. So with that, are there any questions from the board in regards to those proposed findings? Seeing none, should the board uh move to approve this application? There are the three standard conditions which were previously read into the the record uh that we would apply to this decision. Are there any additional conditions which members of the board feel would be appropriate for this application?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon?
Um, I'd suggest a fourth condition that would read, in substance, contrasting materials and or other appropriate means will be provided to separate the rear patio from the driveway, so as to make clear that the patio will not be used for parking. The effort here is just to try to capture what Mr. McCalek told us.
The contrasting materials or other appropriate means are to be
Provided to separate the rear patio from the driveway so as to make clear that the patio will not be used for parking.
Perfect. Are there any additional conditions which members of the board feel would be appropriate? Seeing none, I would ask Mr. Hanlon if you'd be willing to direct the drafting of a decision in favor of approval of the application?
Mr. Chairman, I would.
Thanks for that. So with that, uh, I will move that the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington close the public comment, uh, excuse me, the public hearing for docket three eight six three one forty four Webster Street.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. So as noted before, uh, the board closing the application, the there will be a decision drafted, reviewed by the board, and the decision would be voted on at the subsequent hearing, which would be on September ninth. So with that, um, roll call vote of the board.
Sorry.
Just to, just to clarify.
Mr. Zone, yeah?
I I apologize. Just to clarify the order of operations, uh the, we are not approved yet, and it's not being approved tonight. Is that correct?
So, correct. So we we're closing the hearing so we can prepare the to sit the final decision, and then the final written decision is what would be approved on the ninth.
Any reason it has to wait two more weeks? Just to ask the uh very.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, 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 it's our, that's our typical procedure, is that we we close and then at the at the following hearing, we approve the decision. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mr. Hanlon?
I just point out that they, what we're proposing to do right now is to is to close the public hearing. The board will have an actual official decision that will be exactly what its findings are, that if there were ever an issue in court, this is the thing that the court would look at. Uh, and in any event, we have to file that decision, and we have fourteen days after the time it's some decision is adopted to produce and a decision to file with the town clerk. So really, the only thing that's going on now that wouldn't otherwise go on is that you have to kind of wait and hope that we come out the way we you think we would do, given this given this hearing. But you won't really have anything to rely on until a decision is in any event, even if we did it under our old way, you'd have to wait till the decision is actually filed with the clerk. And then you'll have to let the twenty days expire before you could actually act on it. So it doesn't really affect the timing. It just reflects that you've got to trust us for two weeks to that we won't change our minds.
Got it. Um. Uh, I I I'm not used to this process. We've done this in a few other towns. I love trusting people, but also verifying that we're gonna be okay. Um, so, um uh, just to kind of understand the the timing, uh so, uh, you're closing the public hearing. When is there a vote on it that?
So the vote will to the, we'll we'll close, we vote to close the hearing tonight. Um, at our next meeting, which will be September ninth, so two weeks from tonight, we will uh move to approve the written decision, and we've requested a written decision in favor of approval be drafted. So we will vote to approve the decision. Um, the, I will sign it that night, uh typically because we do it electronically. Uh, so the following morning, the written decision is filed with the town clerk, so the clerk will So the following morning, the written decision is filed with the town clerk. So the clerk will receive it on the September 10th, and then it starts the 20-day appeal period. At the conclusion of that, a certified copy can be picked up from the town clerk and registered with the registry of deeds.
Okay. Was there any, to press a little bit? At the, at the risk of being too pushy, is there? Is there any way to, to I want to find a respectful and kind way to ask this. Is there any way to?
Expedite that?
Expedite that? I'm just used to having things voted on during the meeting and, and then, you know, acting on them. I, I was not aware of kind of another two weeks.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah. Just to, I apologize for interrupting you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Had I known that two weeks ago, I probably would have asked to essentially do what we presented tonight, two weeks ago.
Oh, I switched that.
We got an approval tonight with a written decision. So I'm, I'm maybe at my own fault unaware that there would have been another two-week process plus the, the, the wait.
Yeah, I mean, I short of calling another meeting of the board, there's not really a way to shortcut that, that portion of the time. I will note that, you know, there has been no objections raised by members of the board. The members of board had, at the previous meeting, made requests, which you have fulfilled every one of those requests. So I, I think the chance of the board not approving the decision is negligible to the point of not being existent. If you are concerned about, if there's specific timeframes that you're concerned about, you should certainly discuss those with the building inspector in terms of, you know, if obviously if you proceed on with the work before the permit clears, it's at your own risk. But you would, you would still have 20 days of risk coming up anyways if we.
Yeah, thank you. And I I apologize. I hope my tone is not.
No, not at all, not at all.
No, you're quite fine.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just kind of, I just want to explain that even if we didn't do it this way, you'd still have to have the written decision. We could vote tonight. It's still going to take two weeks to write the written decision. So your timing isn't really influenced by this. It's just a matter.
I think I'm hearing you now. And thank you for clarifying that. So thank you for hearing me out. I know you've got other business to get to. Very much appreciate the board's time. Sounds like we are in good shape. Are you, is the request that we will need to come back for that in two weeks?
Not at all.
Okay.
Nope, great.
If you hang in here, I think we have coming up one of these things in another case right now.
Well, gentlemen, thank you for your time. I don't mean to take more than we need. I appreciate it. And thank you for the kind feedback on the changes as well.
No, not at all, not at all. So with that, we have the vote to close the, this, the public hearing here. So with that, a roll call vote of the board, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Jabranowski?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, we are closed on, on 144 Western Street. Thank you all for coming back and for your, your work on this project.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you as well. So with that, we will go back to our agenda. We will return to our administrative items. First up is the item number two, which is the approval of the written decision in docket 3861, 351 Appleton Street. This is a decision that was written by Mr. Baranowski, distributed to the board for questions and comments, and returned to the board in a final form this afternoon. Are there any additional questions or comments in regards to the written the written decision in 351 Appleton? Seeing it's none. I move that the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington approve and adopt the written decision in docket 3861, 351 Appleton Street, which grants a special permit for a second driveway under section 6110A in the zoning by law. A second?
Second, second.
Dupont? So oddly, I am not eligible for voting on this matter, which I don't think is, I don't think it's a matter for moving. Hopefully that's.
I don't think so.
So of voting to approve, we have Mr. Dupont?
I don't think I was here on it.
Mr. Dupont doesn't make it either.
Mr. Dupont doesn't make it either. All right, Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Baranowski?
Yes.
Okay, so that's approved unanimously forward to zero. Perfect. And for that, then item number three is a vote to approve the meeting minutes from August 11th, 2025. These are minutes that were prepared in very short order by Ms. Ralston, distributed to the board for questions and comments. Are there any additional questions or comments in regards to the minutes for August 11th? Seeing none, I move that the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington approve the minutes for the August 11th, 2025 meeting of the board.
Second.
Mr. Hanlon, so roll call vote of the board, Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Baranowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that those minutes are approved. Item four on our agenda, the minutes for the August 12th meeting of the Board of Appeals, these were also written by Ms. Ralston, distributed to the board for questions and comments. Are there any additional questions or comments in regards to the minutes for August 12th? Seeing none, I move the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington approve the minutes for the August 12th, 2025 meeting of the board. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, so roll call vote of the board, Mr. Dupont, I believe you said you were not present?
For which?
The 12th.
I was there for part of it, which, which.
Do you want to vote on the, you feel appropriate to vote for the minutes?
Oh, the minutes. I was there for part of the meeting, so I'll say yes.
Okay. Mr. Hanlon?
We're not going to hear you muted.
I'm sorry, that's the problem. Yes.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
And Mr. Baranowski?
Yes.
And those are approved. That is the end of our administrative items. So our next meeting is coming up on Tuesday, September 9th. And Ms. Ralston, I believe we have, we have a continuation from this week of 69 Falmouth Road. Are there any, what, is there, and I know on, that on that date, we do have a new item.
29 Edmund, that's the variance where they're selling property to each other.
Okay.
Is that Edmund or Hemlock?
Oh. Might be Hemlock, sorry.
I think our continuance to next week is Melrose, right?
Oh, you're correct. Sorry. Yeah, 37 Melrose Street. And then we'll have a vote on the two decisions, those being Falmouth and Webster.
Yes.
Great. So there being no other business before the board. I will thank you all for your participation in tonight's meeting of the Arlington zoning board of appeals. I appreciate everyone's patience throughout the meeting. I'd especially like to thank Colleen Ralston and Mike Champa for their assistance in preparing for and hosting our online meeting. Please note the purpose of the board's recording the meeting is to ensure the creation of an accurate record of its proceedings. It is our understanding that the recording made by ACMI will be available on demand at acmi.tv within the coming days. If anyone has comments or recommendations, please send them via email to zda@town.earlington MA.us. That email address is also listed on the zoning board of appeals website. And to conclude tonight's meeting, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Mr. Hanlon. Thanks, Mr. Dupont. Roll call vote to adjourn. Mr. Dupont?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Baranowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, the board is adjourned. Thank you all so very much.
Happy Labor Day.
Thank you.
Happy Labor Day, Paul. Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Night.
Good night.